I mean, the Pledge of Allegiance, we can get going. Okay. First thing is approving the agenda. There's a couple things that we need to add that we received tonight. The first, we're going to make 7A. We're going to discuss the, or approve the new legal entity of Battoon Liquor License. And the other two items, the one-day gambling for April 18th at the Knights of Columbus, and the one-day temporary on-sale liquor license at the community center, we are going to add to the consent agenda. So if there's any other changes or questions? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Second by Pat Scripture. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay. Amended, approved amended agenda is set. So first thing on the agenda is the opening, or I guess the accepting of the bids for the 2015 CIP Street Project.
We have with us tonight Mr. Chris Knutson of SEH. Chris Cavett is on vacation and...
Is he in Hawaii too?
Yeah, maybe he and Ken both went there, I don't know. So Chris is filling in for Chris Cavett. For that, Chris, go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. So I'm here today to talk about the 2015 Street Utility Project and the bids that were received this last March 27th. Put up here on the screen, the map here. I just added it, I set it down. A second. So the project location is the area primarily to the west of Highway 21, north of Highway 19, includes First Street Northwest, Second Street Northwest, Third Street Northwest, Fifth Avenue Northwest, and Sixth Avenue Northwest. On March 27th at 10:00 a.m., two bids are received for the project. The high bid was $1,140,261.55, and the low bid was $1,028,651.50 for the base bid. The engineer's estimate for the project was $971,597.50. In addition to the base bids, two alternates were also bid with the project. Alternate one was for relocating a sanitary sewer service for 309 Fifth Avenue Northwest. And alternate two was for grouting sanitary sewer joints. As I mentioned, the prices did come in slightly higher than our estimate, but they did fall in line with what we had estimated during the feasibility stage of the project, which was between $970,000 and $1,060,000. The low bid was BCM Construction Incorporated out of Fairbolt, Minnesota. BCM Construction, I don't believe has done any work in New Prague, but they have bid on most of the street projects over the last four or five years. We did get some input from other engineers we work with that have worked with this contractor, and they do satisfactory work. So at this point, we are recommending award of the project, of the base bid, alternate one and alternate two, to BCM Construction. You'll see in your packet, the resolution. And so it is recommended that the City Council approve the attached resolution, accepting bids, and award the contract for the 2015 Street Utility Project to BCM Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,038,701.50, which includes the base bid, alternate one, and alternate two. So...
Any questions?
Do you have any reason why it was, the bids came in higher and why there were only two bids?
Sure. The bidding environment has kind of changed over the last few years. The prices, contractors are able to get more projects now, there are more projects out to bid at this time, and so we believe they're bidding a little less aggressively, and they're able to be a little more selective perhaps on the products that they bid on. So we, there were multiple prime bidders holding plans for this, but because of how many projects they had, not all of them bid on this project. Looking at the prices in this, there are some things that are slightly higher, some things that are slightly lower, but overall, I think the bids were fairly close to what we would expect.
The other part of our discussion with Chris and the staff last week was, we're not doing a lot of significant underground piping, water main, sewer main replacement as part of this project. If you recall, we're doing a little bit of water, and then more sewer grouting and sewer replacement, and so we're not doing full-depth reconstruction with most of this as we've done in prior years. So the size of the project as well, you know, in that vicinity of a million dollars is on the smaller end of what we've been doing here in recent years, and so that affected the number of bidders as well.
Is the timeframe pretty much the same? Timeline?
Yeah. The timeline we have is the, we don't anything from the contractor directly, but they can start anywhere between May 4th and the end of, end of May. And then, once they start work, they have to complete it within 10 weeks. So we're looking at probably mid-July to somewhere mid-August for final completion, or for substantial completion.
With the nice earlier spring, is there any possibility they would want to start earlier, or...
There would be, but I think it's going to depend, and the reason we don't have an answer from the contractors, they don't know what other projects they're going to get. So it's going to depend on their availability also. But there's, there's a very high likelihood that, once the low limits are off, they'll be ready to go.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Chris. I guess if there's no other questions, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the bid with alternate, base bid with alternate one and two with BCM Construction on Fairbolt.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusich. Is there any other comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
Aye.
Okay, passes 4-1. Thank you, Chris. Why don't you let Chris Cavett bring you some other time, you know, don't make him have all the fun all the time. Next on the agenda is the agreement with North Memorial Healthcare for Ambulance Services.
We have with us tonight, and we'll give them a couple of seconds to, to get their PowerPoint put together, but we have Pat Coyne, the Vice President of Ambulance Services for North Memorial Healthcare, as well as Dave Augustine, who is the manager of the New Prague, Fairbolt, and Wasika Ambulance Services. And they're both in to do a bit of an overview and presentation. If the council recalls, I think Mark is the only one that's been around since this was originally approved back in January of 2010 with a five-year contract that went from May of that year and expires the end of April this year. They've provided the ambulance services, and we, they took the service from a BLS to an ALS with paramedics. And so I've asked them to give a bit of a recap tonight on what's occurred over the last five years, where are they currently at, and then any prognosis or comments moving forward. One of the other major changes that you're going to see in this process is that this contract is between the city and North Memorial Healthcare, and will not include the hospital going forward. That was done for certain reasons, and I'll let them explain that. And I believe in the audience is Mary Climp, the hospital administrator, who also may have some comments to add tonight as well. But let me turn it over to Pat and let you start the process.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in attendance and at home, thank you very much for allowing us to come before you. It just seems like it was five years ago, and it went by in a blink of an eye, that we would be before you in a very emotional decision at that point in time to go in a little different direction and professionalize the ambulance service in order to make it better for the, for the community. And we'll share a few things with you this evening that I think will prove that that was a good decision. For some of you, this will be old news. You've seen and heard this before, but certainly many people are new to us, may not know to us, so please bear with us as we go through this, and certainly willing to take any questions along the way or after. Well, many folks may not be aware that North Memorial, their, their history in emergency services goes way back into the 50s. And to this day, it continues to be their, their center of excellence. And it includes a large Level 1 Trauma Center, and Education Department, of course, our ambulance service, our air ambulance service as well. So all in all, a very solid group of emergency services, and we draw, fortunately, we're able to draw on all those services and expertise that we have in-house to make our ambulance service that much better. We have a number of values, assets if you will, that we require of all of our, our team. Doesn't matter where you fall on the organizational chart, it's required of everybody. And one of those is teamwork, and another is communication, respect, accountability, pride, and technical skill. And all of those things are critical, and we manage to those things, and that's what we feel that we owe the community. As I mentioned earlier, the service started, hospital started in the 50s, but the ambulance service started in 1961. To this date, we have about 750 personnel, EMTs, and paramedics, nurses, pilots, some support staff, dispatchers, and so forth. We'll transport this year somewhere in the vicinity of about 75,000 patients, and we'll respond to about 95,000 incidents overall in all of our service areas. And we seek to be the best at what we can be, and therefore, we seek accreditation from an outside source who comes in and takes a look at, at us and compares us to the highest level of standards that exist for ambulance services in the country. And so this is our third time that we've been accredited by the Commission on Accreditation for Ambulance Services. And to some degree, this gives you assurance that it's not just us saying what we do, but it's somebody else, experts in the industry coming in and also agreeing with that statement. Many communities have come to us over the last several years, and, and as they've looked at outsourcing their, their ambulance department, they've begun to realize that it takes an awful lot of support services here, which you see listed. And they've realized that, one, they're probably not very good at managing a medical enterprise, if you will, and that it takes a lot of services, and in order to provide those services, the choice would either be to grow the size of their government or to, to outsource it. So in many cases, in the case of Marshall, Redwood Falls, and many other areas in, in the Midwest here, and specifically in Minnesota and Western Wisconsin, we've worked with a lot of governments like New Prague, and have agreements to provide ambulance services in the communities. This is a graphic, if you will, of our service area. And we're as far north as Bemidji and far south is Wasika, many places in between. One day it was a little slow, so we added up our square miles for coverage, and it was determined that it's about the same as the square miles in the state of Massachusetts. So it's a daunting task, if you will, but it's one that we take great pride in, and we always want to do our best for every community that we're in. I'll turn it over to Dave here, and Dave will share with you some of the good things that have been going on here for the last few years.
Thanks, Pat. And, okay. And, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for hearing about us tonight, and I just want to take you through a few of the things that we've done in New Prague through the last five years that have brought forth of where we are right now. So one of the things we work very hard on is community-based teamwork, especially with our first responder groups, training. That's, we can't do the job out there all by ourselves, and that's very important to us. In New Prague right now, our staffing is at a level of nine paramedics and 12 EMTs, and we do have a couple of EMTs that are, just started the hiring process, and we will bring those onboard in the next couple of months through our orientation process. We do staff two ambulances. The 121 and 122 are just numerical designations for our trucks. And our first-line truck, if you will, is staffed 24 hours a day, and our second truck is staffed 16 hours a day. We do also provide regional coverage from Fairbolt and Wasika when needed for transfers, et cetera. So we just, we move trucks around as we need to. And just a real quick snapshot of what we've been doing the last five years in terms of our volume, and I think one of the things that we've, we did see after we started operations here in New Prague was a little bit more volume than the history had it in New Prague, and that's primarily because of transfers. So about 40% of our, our business is transfers from the hospital to other locations. Some of the things that we have advanced in technology over the last five years is electronic charting, some AVL, which is Automatic Vehicle Locator Systems. We did have a new ambulance here two years ago. Lucas Device, now I'll show you photos of theirs to give you a little better idea. So we are into electronic medical records now. We started that this past year, and that's been very successful for us. That's just, I guess, a mandate by the federal government to do this. And this is our AVL, so all of our trucks have GPS systems in them for mapping, and all of this data comes right from our computer-aided dispatch center, and it maps and routes the, the teams right to the call. It's been a very good tool for us. This is just a snapshot of the new ambulance we put in the service here a couple of years ago, and the back of it. Lucas Device is a automatic CPR device, and it's a battery-powered device that will do CPR, and it, it works very well. It's a great tool, and I think it's one of the life-saving devices that's made a big difference in pre-hospital cardiac arrest. And it's, it's very good for us. The other big thing we've instituted here in the last five years is a, it's a video laryngoscope for doing intubations, another technology, but it's one of the advanced airway procedures that are very high-risk, and the more tools we can put into the hands of the paramedics and EMTs, we feel the better success for, for patient care. A little bit just about our QA management system. We develop a scorecard. We keep track of our patient satisfaction and some quality indicators every year, and this is just a snapshot, I'm not going to go through this, but we take a look at some high-risk patient encounters that we want to make sure we're doing a good job of, and of course, patient satisfaction, as well as some financial metrics that we look at. We've been very happy with our overall patient satisfaction. We use an outside source, a survey team. It's a national database that encompasses 69 different ambulance services across the nation, and so far in 15, 2015, our region has been doing very well against the national database averages. So we're very pleased with our patient satisfaction scores. And of course, as I mentioned before, I think the community involvement is very important to us, and we try to get involved and work with the community, cover special events, do some work with students in the community, and provide a presence, and so people know who we are. Another thing is very important to us is our training, and I do want to highlight the MDQE, the first bullet point there is our medical directors. We have very active medical directors in our service, and they get out to our region and provide excellent continuing education, very hands-on group of physicians that, that support us. So I guess I want to just finalize by saying thank you, and entertain any questions you might have about North Memorial Ambulance.
Anyone have any questions? Yes, the only question I have, Mike, really, what is the difference of, besides the hospital not being involved with this contract and the previous contract?
Couple of other notable changes. One, which isn't a change, is it's another five-year agreement. They've requested that. Does not include the hospital. Minor change in the description as far as the participants on the advisory committee. I think originally, we had two from the city, two from the hospital, and two from North. Now it's basically, it's set up to be representatives appointed by the city, at our discretion, whoever we want them to be. Typically, besides the mayor and myself, I've had the police chief go along as part of that. On the hospital side, it's been the administrator and the ER doc, and then multiple representatives from North. So it's been a good committee process. There's no requirement or dependency on subsidies from the townships or the hospital. Originally, part of the reason and the rationale in bringing in the hospital was to help supplement if North didn't hit certain targets, and I think over the course of the five years, Mary, was it twice that the hospital contributed? Maybe? But it was at least a couple of times that there was an annual contribution, and then the townships, I think we took in about 20,000 to 21,000, but they have phased out and they've terminated their agreements, and so there is no contribution from the township. There is no requirement as part of the agreement that if for any reason North doesn't hit their targets, the city has no expected contribution to supplement either of those. On the ambulances and the equipment, when we first entered into the agreement, we had provisions somewhere through the five years that North would buy the ambulances, the equipment and the supplies. They've paid us that already, and we have it set up that for any reason, should this contract end or cease, we'd have abilities to, to buy back the equipment at fair market value. The assets would all be appraised and determine the value. The term we touched on, insurance provisions have been brought up to new state statutory requirements, and no change in the facilities lease agreement there. It started out on an annual basis, and it gets adjusted every year based on CPI cost changes there. So with that, I don't believe there's any other major changes that we had incorporated in there, and the city staff is recommending approval. I will tell you, I had the first opportunity to work with North Ambulance when we did the same action back in 1995 with the City of Marshall, took our city volunteer ambulance service and converted that and made arrangements to contract with North Memorial, and that's been in place ever since. We did it five years ago and upgraded it from BLS to ALS, and you heard the number of improvements that have been made in the last five years. We've had no calls or complaints over the time that, that we've been in this agreement. Early on, we had some questions on, you know, locational issues as far as responding to calls. They put in a new system and modified that very quickly, and so any concerns or issues that have either come from the city or the hospital in our discussions have all been rectified very quickly in the process. And so we have nothing but high praise to recommend to the council to re-extend and approve the agreement for the next five years from 2015 to 2020.
Jim, just, you know, I know you've been chief for a short amount of time, but what's your opinion on the, you know, how has it worked with the police department and the...
I believe it's worked very well. We have a very good working relationship with them. Personnel are good. If we do have an issue with a personnel or, or a certain call, we talk to the manager and they resolve the issue real quick. So it's been very positive for us. Very professional.
Mary, would you be so kind to come up and give your take on it from the medical side of a service that we used to have and we have now?
Thank you for the opportunity. As you recall, this was a long time coming. We did a lot of due diligence before we entered into this agreement, and it was prompted by the fact that the EMTs were doing a very good job, but the standard of care was becoming having paramedics available. And in our community, it was felt that that was a priority. The ability to do it on their own, on the city's own, or with the help of the hospital was very limited. Any expertise really lied with North Memorial. So entering into that arrangement and having it, having some responsibility still being retained by the city, the hospital, and North Memorial, more or less kept all of our feet to the fire for the first couple of years to make sure we made good on all the commitments that we knew we were able to do. And I think we did that, and we did way more than that. And so the ability to offer paramedic service in our community and partner with a state expert in ambulance transportation has provided a real improvement in pre-hospital care and in transfers. And in the most recent past two years, we are accepting sicker and sicker patients from Rochester to have long-term recuperation here in New Prague, and reliance on the ambulance to get those patients here or back to Rochester has been very helpful also.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Thank you.
Mary, I had one other one that I should have identified in Section 7 relating to termination of the agreement. In the original contract, that was 270 days. We've expanded that to basically 365 days or one year. So it would take that kind of notice for either party to get out, because obviously, you don't want that terminating in a very short period of time and having to react too quickly to change whatever those outcomes might be. So we increased that.
Okay. And Scott has reviewed it and...
Yes.
...busted it? Okay. Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the five-year contract with North Memorial?
I'll so move. Go ahead. Second.
I got a motion by Mark Bartusik, second by Dave Brusich. Any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming this evening, and we look forward to another great five years.
Dave, thank you very much.
Mayor, we should clarify with us tonight is Chris Schneivel, the local manager of the service, who popped in here right at the end. And as a point of clarification, can I assume that motion did include approval of the facilities lease agreement as well?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, purchase of a wide-area rough mower for the golf course. Are you taking this?
I'm going to attempt to take it on behalf of Glenn. Jeff is on his way to the Masters Golf Tournament down in Georgia, so he had an opportunity to, to leave on a moment's notice, and so I had met with both him and Glenn before I left on vacation, and they finished up the work this last week. And so as you take a look at it, you have the recommendation on the purchase of the wide-area rough mower, which is one of the three pieces of equipment that was identified by the golf board for inclusion in the, the GEO capital equipment bonding for 2015. As you can see from the bid summary that we put together, as well as Glenn's memo, that what was bid versus what was received kind of ended up being two different things. But primarily, what the staff tried to do in the solicitation of quotations for this is that they were looking at what the specifications that were developed was to provide for a rough mower that had more out front of the mowing decks as it relates to trying to work around trees and obstacles and things at the golf course. around trees and obstacles and things at the golf course. And the Toro was the only one that technically met those specifications. The Jacobson and the John Deere did not. As you can see, we tried to include pictures to help clarify that on the side mounts. Glenn also touched on, when you take a look at that, that over the years, we've had other, different success with other mowers and so in total, what both Glenn and/or Jeff has identified is that they believe that, you know, the rough mower that Toro puts out is a better mower and a better machine than the other pieces. We have, I checked with Jeff, we have both Jacobsons and Toro mowers in the golf department. We've got Toro mowers in the parks department. We've had some John Deeres. We've tried to move away from some of that just because of the frequency that we were replacing and some of the problems and challenges we were running into with some of the John Deeres. Jeff indicated that the other rough mower is a Toro, but he's got a fairway Jacobson mower. He's got a greens and tee mower that's a Jacobson and then an intermediate mower that's also a Toro. So, from the standpoint of the mowers that we have and as we look at the parks department, who now has the Toro 4,000 series mowers as well, you know, from a uniformity, parts replacement, oil changes and those kind of things, trying to standardize some of that equipment where possible. So, in taking a look at that, they're expecting the life expectancy of this could and should be upwards of nine to 10, 10 years, although it's the higher price of the models that you see, they believe for the recommendations and the items highlighted in the memo, that they think it is a better purchase in the long run. As you take a look at this mower price and as I took a look at the other remaining pieces yet to be procured, i.e. the equipment lift and the top dresser, with some of the tradings and how we put that together, they're of the belief that we should be able to still be within budget of the amount that the council authorized at the early meeting in March that was recommended by the golf board. One of the big things that changed over recent months here with this model of mower is that it's gone from, again, I'm probably not the best one to be conveying this, is that went from a tier-three engine to the new tier-four, which deals with some of the new environmental requirements and pollution requirements for the diesel engine that is on the mower. And so, collectively, based on all of those elements, the golf staff and if Glenn had been here, he would have echoed the same recommendation from the golf staff that we met and took a look at it and are recommending the award of bid to MTI Distributed Inc. on our Brooklyn Center for the Toro 4100.
And the reason it's taxed, because it can be driven on the road or...
No, it, because it's in the golf course area, that it was one of the areas that where you have municipal golf courses and private golf courses, they weren't going to give us the benefit of, most of the things that we purchased at the golf course are all taxable versus the parks and the other departments aren't because they are not exempt under the new law.
So, we couldn't buy it through the parks department and let them use it?
Change the golf course to a park.
No, I will.
For the baseball park. Let the golf course use it.
Yeah. Okay, any questions?
It doesn't go through the golf board then?
The golf board approved the recommendations when they brought these to you on March.
The bids, I mean.
No, they haven't historically in the past, that because it's being purchased with the GeoCapil equipment bonds, they're recommending the purchase of it, but the final purchase, we, you know, we typically would provide that to them, but when this got approved in March and just solicited quotations, if we waited till the next regular golf board meeting, which would be the end of the month, the timing was such that historically, they've approved kind of the total dollar allocation and because we do that with the bonding, we've come to the council through that part of the process.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the Toro GM 4100D.
Okay, I got a motion by Dave Bruczek.
Second.
Second by Pat Scripture. Any other questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Moving right along. Are you taking this, Mike, or are you going to let Tom and...
I can assist if he needs help, but...
Oh, he needs help.
Definitely need their help. Be ready.
I was a little five minutes late, Tom. I said 7:30.
I knew I needed to adjust your timeframe, so. The first item on the agenda for the golf board here was the golf privileges for the GME PGA Pro and the golf superintendent. That was an issue brought or discussed at the last golf board meeting and basically the issue at hand that was brought for discussion was with the recent council action to remove playing privileges or memberships for city employees that also then expanded, I guess, I don't want to say banned, but the loss of playing privileges for our golf pro and our superintendent at the golf course. And a number of golf board members had sensed the need to bring the discussion that for our business model, it really made more sense for our golf professionals to have playing privileges and be on the course and not having to pay for those golf playing privileges. There was a lot of different discussions. There was a lot of discussion that we, we as a board understood the action the city council had taken and they had gone through great effort to carefully think that through. However, in the end, as far as our discussion and how it fits with the golf course, we really feel it benefits for the superintendent and the PGA pro to be at our course as much as possible. And we really felt at the end of the day that there's many valuable services they provide while they're even playing golf and at the course in their quote-unquote off time, whether it's bringing in new potential members and playing around with them. As far as our PGA professional, whether it's Jeff playing around and noting many items on the course that need to be, you know, fixed from a maintenance standpoint, whether it's Kurt being out on the golf course for an additional four hours and, you know, realizing the snack bar has needs and making a special run to get those things taken care of. You know, there's the other issues of our PGA professional giving lessons. Do we want, do we want our PGA professional to be giving lessons and then having to go pay to play five or six holes with that person they're trying to give lessons to us as a golf board? It didn't make a lot of sense. And then the bottom line is, we really felt at the end of the day, having our golf professionals at our place of business, whether it's during their time of business or their off time, the more we keep them there, whether it's interaction with our members or new potential guests or potential clients, the really more time we can have them on the site, it's really going to improve our business model and it's really almost a no-cost, you know, to the golf course and, or a very small minimal cost with a high benefit ratio to the golf course. So, with that, we took up the discussion and approved that the PGA professional and the golf superintendent should have golf privileges for golfing at the New Prague Golf Course. And in addition, we did also in the last couple of weeks, do a little due diligence or some research with some other golf courses around the state. And I have four, four different municipal courses here where we did some calling, the City of Woodbury, Chaska Town Course, municipal course over in Superior, Wisconsin, and Brightwood Hills over in New Brighton, Minnesota. And in all instances, they, the professionals there do not, they have golf privileges and other, really, they actually extend more than just golf privileges. Over in New Brighton, the superintendent and the PGA professional do not pay. Their families do not pay. Chaska Town Course, the super, two assistants, the superintendent, all have golf practice privileges along with their families. City of Woodbury, they offer playing privileges to their seasonal staff as well as obviously their manager and superintendent, along with discounted golf cart rental. And then Superior, Wisconsin, another municipal course, manager and golf superintendent have golf privileges. So, those were just a few and, you know, we could extend it further, but I'm pretty confident that most, if not all, you know, municipal golf courses typically will have their manager superintendent with free privileges. So, with that said, that our vote was taken at the last meeting and the recommendation was to extend those privileges to our PGA professional and superintendent.
Okay, any questions on that? I mean, I guess I don't have an issue with it as long as we handle it properly with the IRS to make sure that that's handled right because that was really my first concern with the golf to city workers was that, you know, that when the IRS gets involved and it's something of value that people have to take ownership of it. So, but that's just my opinion on that. I just, again, it wasn't to me a dollar and cent sign. I just wanted to make sure that the IRS is handled right because it doesn't make sense to make a decision and then years down the line, all of a sudden you audit comes through and it doesn't look good.
Chuck, in that case though, why would the golf professional? He shouldn't even be included in this discussion because he doesn't work for the city.
Right, but he's, you know, get a value. Are you talking about the IRS thing?
Yeah.
Well, he's getting a membership, basically.
And there's nothing in the contract.
But he doesn't work in the contract. I mean, he doesn't work for the city. This was more about city employees, wasn't it? And in our case, we're city council members. The golf professional's neither one of those.
No, as the mayor indicated, the issue had to deal with IRS regs and whether that's considered a form of compensation or a benefit that should be considered for tax reasons. In the case of GME, that currently they pay for the membership of the golf professional, our PGA pro Kurt, in that regard. If we provide a benefit or compensation, whether it's in cash or anything of that nature, if we provide that benefit, we'd have to verify with the auditors that we'd still possibly have to send a 1099 on that basis, even though we're not technically paying them for that. GME was paying for that membership previously to now.
Good.
So, you know, why, we just redid that contract. Why didn't they try and negotiate that? Maybe we could have paid less, less to GME then, since if that's part of their expenses, you know?
I guess I see this as part of their job description and I'm not sure how that fits into memberships, but if it's part of their job description, should they have to pay for something in their job description unless we specifically call it out?
It's not in their job description though.
Well, from what I'm hearing, they need to be on the course. In Kurt's case, he's giving lessons. In Jeff's case, he's reviewing everything on the course. And oftentimes, when you're playing, you're evaluating the course at the same time. So, to me, it should be in their job description that they need to be out there. And maybe if they're professionals, it doesn't matter if it's 2:00 in the afternoon or 2:00 a.m. in the morning. It's, they're professionals, they have to be there, period.
Yeah, it's hard to argue with that. You know, that's true and it does happen. I just thought as long as we're looking at, you know, we're looking at what other golf courses are doing, well, it's very common knowledge along with the fact that the golf professionals, you know, don't pay green fee, don't pay anything to golf. Also, the part-time people get benefits. There may be restrictions in both cases. They may need to work a certain number of hours and in fact, our part-time people out there are used to too. So, I'm just wondering why we're only looking at those two, not the whole picture. You know, why wouldn't we look at the whole thing? And if we're going to treat people like other golf courses do, then why aren't we looking at the part-time people too? I mean, they had the, taken away from them too, you know? And it's good for them to be out on the course because if somebody comes in and wants to know hole number nine is or 16 or whatever, they are familiar with the course, they can direct them and it's also good for them to know New Prague golf so they can communicate and have a conversation with the golfers. I mean, it's all good. The whole thing's good, you know? I just felt we should have looked at the whole thing and that we should have done a survey, which they did after the fact. And the other thing you need to know is the first communication we got on March 4th, I believe, was an email from Wade bringing this up. And all he did was say that Jeff and Kurt got to play any place in the United States for free. You know, it's limited. Nobody's going to let them play at their course, you know, unlimited golf. And then that was the first thing he said in that email and then the second thing he said was that he's not aware of any golf courses locally or otherwise charging a membership because they were talking about memberships at first. But during the golf board meeting, when I brought it up, that I had called a golf course, Chaska, and they do green fees or sure it's not green fees, it's, or is it memberships? Which is it? And then Jeff entered into the conversation and said, yes, it's green fees because even at Hazeltine, the pro has green fees. He doesn't have a membership. So, you know, there's just a little more to it. You know, it kind of got brought up. I don't know why Tom brought it up at the meeting, why Wade didn't, because he's the one that sent the email originally.
Correct.
But I just think if we're looking at two people that work at the golf club, why aren't we looking at them all and maybe doing a survey, you know, and asking what's happening with everybody, you know? I know I hear quite often from the part-time people that I used to get that membership, you know, it was, I think it was like a reduction off of the membership or certain dollar amount. And we used to get that and now we don't get it, you know? So, you know, it's kind of a sore spot and I think if we're looking at it and we're looking at changing something, we should do a survey and see what, you know, probably a written one where they're responding. I just don't, I don't, I don't know. It just kind of brings a lot, I put a whole bunch of stuff together because I was thinking about it, but, you know, and it is true that, you know, Kurt is an employee of GME, but we should just talked about that, you know, we talked about that already.
And I think...
And is this unlimited golf going to include a golf cart? Probably. So, how is that going to get on the 1099 and free use of the driving range and, you know, there's a gamut of things. And I can see it like they're working, yeah, they shouldn't be playing for golf when they're out there doing lessons or whatever, you know, like that, when they're working. they're out there doing lessons or whatever, you know, like that, when they're working. But if they aren't working, I don't know.
Amy, you had something to say?
Well, I just have, just for clarification, will this come out of the, the golf budget? So it won't be general tax dollars? Or who will be, who will this be coming from?
I don't think there's gonna, there's not gonna be a transaction. There won't be a transaction.
There won't be, but still, there'll be.
There could be. It's not like there could be.
It's theory, it's loss of revenue.
Right, because it would be the golf revenue. So is that going to be?
In theory, but you can argue that the golf course is already there and maintained, so it doesn't cost them anymore anyway.
But the, remember the attorney said it, it did, and that's why we needed the 1099s. So, you know, but I totally get it because that's the way it is everywhere. I mean, we don't really know that, but we think we know it anyway. We don't have proof of it. We don't have a survey or anything. And I think that this council usually bases decisions on facts and not just, well, we know that that's the way it's done. That's why I'd like a survey, I think a survey is appropriate here to see what's actually done, so we can really kind of consider, you know, the part-time people too. I mean, if that's what's done everywhere, that the part-time people get some kind of golfing privilege, and so do the, the professionals, the PGA and the GCSAA, if they do, we gotta really take a good, hard look at that, I think, because we don't want to be the only golf course in the US that does that, does this, that doesn't give golf to those people.
If we were, if we were not getting enough employees there, I would agree with you. Since there's always a long line of people to work at the place and we're trying to keep it in the black, I don't think we go there. I'm okay with, with golf professional superintendent, I have no problem with that, but I don't think we need to go any farther there.
You were gonna say something, Amy?
I mean, I can see the point. Yes, they need to golf. You know, that would be part of your job. I'm just wondering why, or in the future, if it can be just included in their contract? If they're GME employees?
Only one is. The superintendent is our city employee.
What I was going to add, that was brought up in the golf board discussion as far as the GME city employee, and I think it was also mentioned that regardless of GME was part of our program or not, if, if we had the traditional city manager relationship as we did with Ken Norland, we would want the same privilege for our manager, whoever's gonna potentially be bringing in new golf clients or new golf guests. So, you know, regardless of whether we have a manager, a pro-manager, that person that's leading our charge for new clients and bringing in, you know, potential new members and showing them our golf course, we don't want them paying for golf to bring out a new potential member. It seems counterintuitive. And that was the crux of the discussion. So I know the GME aspect of it complicates things.
I'm wondering, like, I think St. Paul has a couple of golf courses that are run by management companies too, and what, how do they do? Do they have something in the contract? Do they, it'd be nice to have some basis to kind of make the decision on rather than just kind of guessing.
Right now, since the golf season's hopefully gonna start in full force here rather quickly.
That's already, our mayor was out there, I think, as soon as it opened, he probably was the first one on the team.
I was on a golf, I was on a golf course, but it wasn't in New Prague. But yeah, he golfed, dude. But anyway, as I suggested, we at least, because when we talked about the city taking away the, the-
Memberships.
Memberships, I never include, these two people were never in my mind at all. I was thinking of people that worked in other lines of work, but I can certainly see where this is important and I see no reason not to approve it tonight because they're gonna be hopefully golfing and getting in new members soon, so I don't see a problem with it.
Kurt already has a membership paid for by GME, so, I mean, it's not like he isn't getting one.
I'm not gonna change my mind. That's what I think. I see no problem with it.
Is that right, Mike? Do they pay for their membership?
That was what was conveyed at the meeting, as I recall. The way he indicated that he paid for that for Kurt.
Oh, okay.
I don't see, I guess personally, I don't see why Jeff should be assessed a membership charge. I think he, that is his responsibility to oversee this whole thing. And a membership, having to pay a membership would just distract from what he does or what he has to do.
I know, I, I agree. I never-
I don't think he should be, I think write it into his contract that, you know, he has to be there whenever he's needed. And that means he has to go out and play a round of golf, so be it.
Yeah, but he's not getting paid when he's-
It's, it's really not that Jeff is an hourly employee that gets paid for 40 hours a week. If he works in excess of 40 hours, he gets time and a half. That's under the Fair Labor Standards requirement. What you're talking about predominantly is his private play on non-city hours and whether you allow him to do that at our course at no cost.
I know what I-
That's what it amounts to. The, the playing is part of being the superintendent, has no responsibility associated with his job duties that he's being compensated for. What you heard Tom describe, and it is fairly common, whether we do a survey or not, that it is fairly common that a golf superintendent and/or the golf PGA pro at most courses don't pay for membership fees for there. Whether you choose to allow that for other part-time staff into whatever degree, that ends up being a local decision on how you handle that or how you provide that. If you take a look at the piece that the council had that was previously in the personnel policy that was provided, I believe, as kind of a health-related benefit to encourage employees to go utilize that. And again, as you recall, we had relatively small participation, I think it was 10 or 12 employees out of about 48 full-time employees, that in that case, the, the true issue was, as the mayor described, is that, you know, it didn't cost the city anything to provide that. And I would say for the time that most of those individuals that played, they weren't necessarily taken away from prime time, but one could argue there were no limitations or restrictions of when that was. But in the end, the issue was that we probably weren't addressing properly was the fact whether that is a compensable benefit and whether it should be flagged for IRS purposes. So what you truly want to do is really a choice that rests with the council in that regard. And you can, and excuse me for saying, you can bifurcate the issue and separate the superintendent and the PGA pro. You can look at the part-time employees, you can look at other employees and do really whatever you want to because we're technically the owner of the course. If we provide that as a benefit and there is no cost to the employee for that, there still has to be an accounting of that for compensable wages from an IRS standpoint. So we've done no further work to try to bring this back to you than we spent the last time when, when Scott was out here, when we went through all of that last year.
Yeah, I, I wonder though, because the way he worded it, that there, you know, it is using revenue because somebody could have golfed in that spot. I know Chaska, they, when I called them, they said that, that you can, they can golf, but not when it's busy. When it's busy, they have to pay, but they give them the resident fee. But-
Yeah, you would have to attempt to try to-
And they probably don't have to do a 1099.
You would have, well, you would attempt to try to determine what are the prime time hours and indicate that if we're gonna provide this benefit, you have to play in those other off-hours. But I'm certain in a number of instances and cases is that there isn't always all of those tee times that are tied up and used that maybe some of those employees did happen to use.
They never pay full price. Guarantee it. No way.
What are you talking about?
I'm saying in those busy places, if a golf professional's not supposed to golf when it's busy and he goes out there, he does not pay full, full price, ever.
And they allow the part-time too.
Ask Kurt, I bet they don't.
I wasn't sure if I could just step into the meeting. I mean, the one thing that I did want to inject is just, it's just a fact, not necessarily to do with the, 100% with the discussion, but wherever my name is listed within the PGA of America, I'm one of 26,000 members, the New Prague Golf Club is always associated with it, in our national roster, in our local rosters, all meeting invitations, all events. The same goes with Jeff Pint. He competes on a local basis in the Minnesota Golf Association. And any competitions that he participates in, it doesn't say, comma, his home address in New Prague, it says New Prague Golf Club, which to me is advertising dollars that are never spent by the golf budget. Just wanted to inject that because I know that would never come up in discussion, just to keep that in mind, you know, moving forward.
Thank you for that. Any other comments?
Kind of, you know, this sort of, really not, it's about this, but it's not, you know, how they can go play at other courses for free? Well, we do have gift laws and wording in our handbook about that kind of thing and it's, you know, I'm wondering, can they even accept that, working for the city? I don't know if that's ever been brought up, but I mean, it just made me think about it.
Right, but that's probably a whole different-
I was thinking about it.
Yeah, that's probably a whole different animal.
I move we approve the unlimited golf for the golf pro and the city golf superintendent at no cost per the recommendation above.
Okay, I got a motion.
Second.
And second by Dave Brusich. Any further comments?
Mayor, clarification on that, that I had put in my recommendation. If it is determined that there's a value there and checking with our auditors, you should be compliant with that.
I'm, yeah, sure. That's fine.
Side of they're getting a free cart too, was that the plan? Cart, free?
No, free golf is considered that. It's all included.
Driving range.
Okay, I got a motion by Mark Bartusik and a second by Dave Brusich. Unlimited golf with, obviously following the rules of the IRS. Any other further comment?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I won't, won't be voting in favor of it because the part-timers were not considered and I feel like we're singling out one group of employees and I had one more reason, but I can't think of it, so I just wanted to say that.
Okay. Anyone else have any other comments? I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0.
I didn't mean to say aye. I don't know, sorry.
Go ahead.
Is it possible over the winter, when things are a little slower, to look at the option of what other cities do for other staff?
We certainly can.
Yeah.
I know what the other thing I was gonna say is, I didn't think we should be paying for Kurt.
Right.
It's already paid for.
It's too much to try to ram in.
No, I know, I just, I mean, it needs to be looked at and I don't want it, right, everyone's so busy now getting season and everything ready that wants it, get it ready for next year.
I'm okay with that.
So we're gonna, I'm gonna start over again on this because Pat said she has voted, so I got a motion by Mark Bartusik, second by Dave Brusich, okay? That we are gonna give them the unlimited golf under the rules and regs of the IRS if our auditors deem necessary. And so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
Okay. Passes 4-1, that's okay. Painting quote. This should be an easy one.
This, this is an easy one. So the golf clubhouse needs to be repainted real bad.
Yes, for like 10 years.
Especially the west side. And so we solicited a number of quotations, had them broken out for the west side of the building only and the entire clubhouse, including deck supports and fencing. The, the low bid estimate came in from Nick Slavic and his breakout of pricing was in such a fashion that it really makes sense to do the complete clubhouse of this approximately $6,300 bid. The west side, painting the west side only was about 2,000 and the entire clubhouse, deck supports and fencing was about 5,000. And then I guess once we combined everything, there was some discounting. So his entire bid was around 6,300, the lowest of the four bids, and the golf board recommended that we approve the spend, which would be a spend not allocated in the budget, the 2015 budget. So for that reason, coming out of savings and I guess what would be an amendment to the budget for 2015, that's why it's in front of you today.
Are we doing the same color?
I would assume so. That actually color was not discussed at our board meeting, but I am assuming so.
That's what we discussed.
Okay.
Higher gloss would be beneficial.
And do we have a timeframe that we talked about?
Not at this moment, that, that is being worked on as we speak, assuming it, it will happen fairly soon as it warms slightly up and we'll have to coordinate that with obviously our peak golf times, but-
Be dependent on weather, on temperature, I'm sure.
Sure.
So move.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Mark Bartusik, second by Dave Brusich, to approve the painting bid of 6,250 from Nick Slavic. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, this wasn't in the budget and it's not like they didn't know this needed to be done. So I wish the golf course would budget at budget time in December, you know, November, December, when we're doing it, rather than now we got this extra thing that isn't in the budget. And they're looking at other things too.
It's getting amended to be in there though, right?
I know, but they knew about it already.
Well, they might not have thought of it. I mean, we all make mistakes. In a perfect world, yeah, it'd be in there, but-
Well, I just think that GME is not taking the time to do it, to get it finished on time, so.
Well then, when you're on the golf board, you can get after them about that.
Yeah, I have.
Yeah. Problem solved.
Okay, I got a, I can't remember, I got a motion and a second? We haven't voted on it, right?
No.
Okay, any other comments? Pat, your comment is noted about the budget issue, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Thank you, Tom and Kurt.
Thank you.
Okay. Janet King. Obviously, we're all aware that ServiceMaster has, gave their notice that they'll no longer clean the city hall and the library, right?
Correct.
So we've gone out to other cleaning organizations.
Yep, and Janet King was the only one we, Glenn could find at this point. The recommendation with them would begin service on April 13th, this ServiceMaster will be done this Friday. The pricing that you have in your packet is down about $801 per month for the combined totals. Previously, the city hall, police department piece was at 1745 a month and the library was 936, so we're gonna see a savings of about $800, $801 with-
Find anybody else to quit something so we can renegotiate?
I don't know. Part of this, if you recall, that they weren't able to find anybody locally and so the cleaners have been coming out of St. Cloud.
Oh, that's right.
And so they couldn't do it effectively. And so under Janet King, it's with a corporate company of Janet King and they're using one of their franchisees that will be coming out of either Prior Lake or Lakeville until they can determine where they want to go. They'd like to expand into the area and get other services, but right now, our cleaning service would then come from one of those two franchisees. And at this point, we don't know who until we award this to them tomorrow. So the intent would be that they'd start next Monday, April 13th. The contract was put together by the city attorney, he's reviewed it, Janet King is in agreement with it.
So move.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike? Okay, I got a motion by Mark Bartusik.
Second.
Second by Amy Jurick. There's no other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay.
Can I make one?
Can I make one comment or ask one question about? My concern, and it's not with Janet King or any other service, but it mars with staff. Does the staff remove anything from their desk or put it in a safe place such as no employee of Janet King or anybody else has a temptation to look at confidential or names that maybe they shouldn't be seeing?
Yeah, we've had those conversations with all the employees, both on computers and in public documents and access to documents and records and those kinds of things. And so, we've tried to take care of that. They do have to go through fingerprinting and approval through the PD to ensure that we have that. Right now, that's the best we can do. We've got the liability insurance that covers it. But no, we've tried to ensure that all computer access is curtailed, shut off so that that's not available for basically window peeping or peeking or anything of that nature. And the typical record restor- storages locked up either in the vault or desks or what have you.
I just wanted to be sure that we weren't supplying any temptations to anybody to oversee something they shouldn't.
I don't know that we can ever prevent all temptations, but we've tried to minimize that as much as possible.
But as long as there's a policy out there to clear the desk, that's fine.
So, computers are shut down at night, you said?
They wouldn't have to be shut down, it just has to be locked.
Logged off.
You're logged off.
We've gone to new practices and.
That's what I mean.
It's changed since you were employed.
Okay. Jim?
I've been instructed to approach the podium.
Better camera angles.
In front of you, I just have the 2014 annual report from the New Prague Police Department. And in regards to that report, we track our statistics throughout the year and try and bring them together at the end of the year. One correction I'd want to make is in the middle of the page and first page of the memo, the decrease for calls for service, that should actually read 10% decrease, down about 412, closer to 10% there. But throughout the year, we try and work to mitigate some of those calls, bring those calls down so that we're not spending time going to false alarms or other activities, lockouts, public assists, supervised child exchange. So, I think in this past year, we've seen that 10% decrease in the numbers. And over the past 10 years, calls are down the lowest right now. But I think that is because of an effort that we've been working to reduce some of those calls. Lost and found are down by 50, miscellaneous public down by 226, and our alarm calls are down by 29. By mitigating some of those calls and bringing those numbers down, does free up the officer to go to other activities and do some proactive patrolling, which is what we want them to stay active and busy with. Part two, one and two crimes have been decreased also with calls to those types of calls. Increase in citations, again, by freeing up some of that time, they are able to go out and do enforcement actions. And then, about a 10% decrease in DWIs, goes from 50 to 45. Because our numbers are very, well, not very high, obviously, that five lower isn't that big of difference, but it does equate to about 10%. One notable thing about DUIs, we're seeing that the average level now is starting to come down. And it took about eight to 12 years for that to start showing that effect from when they changed from the .10 to a .08. For many years, it maintained the same level, about a 1.6 on average. But now, in the last couple of years, it's starting to go down a little bit as to the average of that. Some of the concerns we're looking at for the future is, as you can read through the memo, again, detailing what officers are doing, when they are looking into some of those part one and two crimes, it does take longer to investigate. So, we're trying to address some of those concerns. If we get a couple of burglaries or crim sexual assaults that we have to investigate, that can take up a lot of time. So, we are looking at avenues to have better management of cases and assigning some of those investigations also. One notable thing, I did talk about the changes in Scott County, well, in human services agencies throughout the state are getting some mandates from the state on how are they, how they're supposed to respond to calls for child neglect and abuse. With those mandates, they're looking at putting on more personnel. But they do want to collaborate with all the groups in the service industries or government to review these reports. So, we're looking at, in the near future, probably having a law enforcement officer assigned to looking with those reports. Currently, we probably get one or two, one to two referrals a week. And in the past, these probably weren't a big issue, they were something that the county decided they were not gonna take into child protection, they weren't gonna assign it, it was a non-issue for an investigation. But yet, they referred out to us for any criminal issues that we would see. Oftentimes, they don't, they didn't believe that we would look into it because they didn't see any issues there. But if something's referred to us, we have to investigate it to check it out. And the consensus around the county is every referral that is given to a police department is looked into. So, we go and make contact with the family, check out the situation. And if there are no criminal elements in it, then we would close out the case with that. But I see those referrals probably increasing because of the mandates that will come from the state. Any questions from the stats?
Obviously, if, with some of these mandates that come down, obviously, this child neglect is a hot button right now. Do you foresee that you might request additional staffing? If it's, and I, and I don't know if any of these mandates that are coming down are offering any subsidies or anything like that?
They are not. At least, they wouldn't trickle down to law enforcement more than likely. But yeah, I mean, I think we've talked last, last year about putting on an investigator. I would probably feel more strongly, or at least see evidence, that that is gonna be necessary to address that concern in the near future.
I guess what I would recommend, Jim, is start tracking, maybe some of this so that when we do come to budget time, there's some kind of quantified information that you said, hey, due to these mandates, it's taking X number of hours and this and that so that we can kind of make some informed decisions on staffing issues.
Yeah, I will work to do that. Yeah, all of our referrals that we get in right now, I try and have our records department create an incident for that and then assign it to an officer. I assign it to an officer normally during the day then. But yeah, they're, they're already taking time, so I will keep track on that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Liquor violations, that seems to be up. Is that because you're checking more or?
Checking more liquor violations doesn't necessarily mean it's at a bar, but it could just be drunk driving, could be minor consumption, not a drop. Any, any violation that includes or has liquor as why it's a violation, that would be included in that number. But yeah, with more progressive or a little more enforcement activity, we are finding a little more of that. I know over the last few years, we've gotten complaints about dozing key with minors drinking. So, we've tried to step up that with the additional law enforcement coming in, talking about concentrating on watching for minors drinking. That along with even the posse members that we bring in from Scott County, they will also assist in watching for that. But we, we'll, we'll look at doing some training here in early summer with those deputy posse members so they have some basic training on it and then they will work to also enforce it. They would turn it over to a full-time licensed officer to make the arrest then. So, yeah, we're probably just being a little more aggressive in some of that.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have one. Doesn't have to do with anything in the report per se, but I've come to learn that being on this council is very educational. You had a word in your report that I've never seen, never heard before, inimical, page 6A. I had to go to the dictionary and look up what you meant.
Good job, Jim. Are you gonna share that with us?
Yeah, it says, drive after cancellation, inimical to public safety in parents.
It, that is actually a state term that they have used for if somebody is canceled because of an alcohol violation.
Yeah, I see now that it must have come from someplace in the state statutes, but.
Well, thank you again for the good job and appreciate it.
Thank you, council.
Your best to all your officers for the good work.
Thanks.
Okay, next, seven, resolution supporting dedication or dedicated state funding for city streets.
You want me to take that, Amy, or you want to do it?
You can. It was just, yeah, it was just from the, if they support it or not, that's.
Yeah, the League of Cities is again working this year, trying to get legislation changed to allow or provide for street improvement districts, which are similar to, as they identify in here, similar to a park or sidewalk improvement district. It's just another tool in the, in the, in the funding arsenal of trying to help find ways to fund street or highway improvements. Relative to some cities choose not to do much in the way of special assessments and the issues that go with that. Some cities don't receive state aid under the gasoline tax unless you're over 5,000 population. So, it's just an opportunity. The last I had heard and seen is that, I'm not certain that this is really gonna go anywhere this year. Try to include the materials from the League of Minnesota Cities in regards to their position analysis as well as when it went up for consideration, when Amy and I spoke with, I think it was Senator Dahl was the one who indicated that a number of the colleges and other entities that are shown on this page that came out in opposition were vehemently in opposition. And so, I wanted to make sure you saw who's on that list and what their reasoning and rationale is relative to their opposition. You know, they think there's enough opportunities for funding and that they believe it to be an end run around the special assessment law and that, you know, that the city doesn't have to have a need to prove benefit, but you can assess within the taxing district. So, they were just generally opposed to it on many different fronts. And you can see, it's quite inclusive as far as the entities that signed on in opposition to this. And so, the last I had heard and seen within the legislative process is that in all likelihood, this may not make it out of committee this year, so. But the council's choices is whether you want to go on record in providing a copy of this resolution of support. We couldn't provide that to either Representative Vogel or Senator Dahl. That I did indicate that the council had taken action a couple of years ago on the previous format, but now that the league has a new resolution that they're asking cities to consider. So, it's within your ballpark as to whether you want to consider it or not, there's nothing forcing you to consider it. But just another op, funding mechanism to consider down the road if you wanted to, if it ultimately gets passed and approved by the legislature.
Okay. Any comments?
Yeah, I think it's interesting that the ones that opposed it thought it was a negative, that there's no need for the city to prove benefit. I would think that'd be a positive, but at least for cities probably, but not for these housing places and restaurants and all that.
I think Senator Dahl indicated when Amy and I were there that both of the colleges in Northfield, I think he said he heard from both of the college presidents, that were in significant opposition to this legislation.
Well, I have a comment too. If you look at the League of Minnesota Cities league position, they say legislation that would allow cities to create street improvement districts, further allow cities to collect fees from property owners within a district. Yet, in our resolution, it says, now therefore, if you read a little bit further down, provides additional dedicated state funding. That's not what the league says. I don't see the state providing any funding for this. I think it's basically allowing the cities to add it to their tax referendums. So.
You're talking in the last whereas, David?
No, I'm looking at now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of New Prague, Minnesota, that the city of New Prague supports an omnibus transportation funding bill that provides additional dedicated state funding for city streets. I don't read in the League of Minnesota Cities where it's the state that's providing the funding. It's the state that's allowing the cities to apply another tax. That's the way I see this thing. Am I right, Amy?
That's the initial time it was presented, how we interpreted it, but then when I read this, I'm like, yeah, that doesn't sound, sound right. But I wanted to just make sure you guys were aware of the possibility. Because now, with more of this information, it doesn't sound quite as, that it would pertain to us anyways, but.
Well, I mean, eventually it could. I mean, if you could, if it would pass, you could do districts. But, you know, the problem I have with having districts is there's no limitation of what you can charge a district. So, you know, you could really.
That opens up a can of worms.
That, that was my concern, you know, when they talk about these special districts is all of a sudden you start, you make your whole city a district and you say, okay, now we're gonna charge you this, you don't have to prove anything. It just, this is it. And it's gonna be used for street construction and who knows if it's ever gonna be your street, that's gonna be worked on. And that's, that's the problem I have with these districts.
Like, everybody pays for it rather than the people on the street, which we don't prove the benefit anyway, so.
But they're getting the benefit with the new street. I mean, they're gonna be telling, if you do a district, you're not guaranteed that your street is ever gonna be.
The benefit is the increase to the value of that property goes up. That's the benefit, not that you get a new street, it's that it increased your value on your property.
Right.
Yeah.
Anyways, I just want to bring it to the council so they're aware of the issue, but I don't know if it really pertains to us or not because.
Do we always get these, these things that need cities' support? You bring them to us? I remember you brought this one last year.
I think there's certain items that they, they ask for.
Yeah.
You know, the league does ask for.
They must notify you that, oh, we need your support, right, Mike?
Yeah, they, they asked for that and when we went to the legislative conference update here in, I think it was early March, wasn't it?
Yeah, then, and then too, it was early before they had really started talking about transportation. Neither party had agreed on anything. It sounds like they're a little further. So, I don't know now if this is as neat as, as it was then, as it is now.
I think they're just trying to find other alternative ways to help fund street improvements that.
And the league is for this. That's why they're wanting our support.
Yes, on behalf of its members, trying to provide an alternative tool that, you know, it talks about in there that it is modeled after Minnesota statute 435 dot 44. That when you take a look at that is underneath that, which addresses sidewalk improvement districts, basically, the council can adopt by order. districts. Basically, the council can adopt by ordinance an improvement district to defray all or part of the total cost of sidewalk construction and repair by district, and apportioning the cost to all the parcels located in the district on a direct or indirect basis. You can assess all the costs for up to a maximum of five years on equal annual installments, plus interest on unpaid balance. So it's just another funding mechanism that doesn't have to go through probably quite the same arduous requirements that are spelled out in the special assessment law. That's all it does. And whether it would end up looking exactly like that, I think that the intent is that they're using that as the framework, what it would include, if it would include any details. I personally think, from the discussion that I've watched, we're quite a ways away from this being finally adopted, at least from what I've seen.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thanks, Amy, for bringing that to our attention. Number 7A. This is your, what's that?
Oh. It's a different name.
Are we going to approve this resolution?
It says either approve or not approve.
Or you can choose to do nothing.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay. Do we have a second? No, no second.
Agree with it?
No.
No.
I'm not going to agree with it.
Ties for lack of a second.
It's just another option. You don't have to, but...
I'm not going to support it. It sounds...
Okay, next.
That's true.
Sounds too much like our national government right now. We don't need that.
Next on the agenda, 7A, Mike, just a clarification, and so we can...
Yeah, clarification. On March 2nd, the council approved all of the liquor licenses, and specifically, the one for the on-sale and Sunday sale intoxicating liquor licenses for, we know it more as the fishtail versus the license name. But what you approved on that March 2nd, I think we had listed with what we provided to you, is the licensing name was Patoon, Inc. And just to give you some idea of kind of how that was, as part of that was Pat Glasby, and I think the gentleman at the time, before he died in 2011, was Frank Patoon?
Frank.
So that's where you get the, the Patoon part of it. And I can't tell you how many times we've looked at it, that as we look at ensuring that the business is still in existence, and identifies the corporate partners or whatnot, as we looked at that, all of their applications were filled out under Patoon, Inc., when it should have been The Patoon Corporation. So it's a technical correction, both for the, the owners of the corporation, and for our licensing provisions, is we had to ensure that we had it appropriately licensed under the appropriate corporate name. Secondly, the trade name, Doing Business as the Fishtail Grill, that was no different. The application that we had, that we recommended approval on, had listed under the partners of the corporation, the estate of Patrick Glasby, and Eric Enfierst, who is the local manager, and supposedly, he was authorized by the corporation to sign on behalf of the corporation. And the other part of it, that when I got to signing the actual license paperwork that Mary Jo provides to me, and approving the liquor licenses and that before we sent them into the state, I had questions as I look at that, because I know that Eric is in the process of trying to purchase the corporation. But as we took a look at it, also, it did not include the name of Arlene B. Tunin. The year before that, going back to early 2014, if you remember, when Pat died, we took a look at that, and under the law, there's a provision that for a period of 90 days, when a liquor license individual dies, they have 90 days in which to continue, there was what they termed the special administration of the estate of Patrick D. Glasby. So that estate, that special administration had 90 days to act. Ultimately, when they reapplied this year, it came in under the estate of Patrick Glasby. Well, as we talked with Scott and taken a look at this, is the state technically has no authority on behalf of an individual to, to be one of the partners in the licensing process. Arlene, who was listed last year when we discovered, and taking a look at this, that technically, they had been listing Frank Tunin on the licensing for the prior couple of years. He had actually died in 2011. And so technically, we got confirmation that, with the way that his estate was set up, is that everything passed to Arlene, so she should be listed. But then, when it showed the estate of Patrick Glasby, and Scott indicated they could not do that, and they hadn't provided the appropriate paperwork for Eric to technically take action, they worked amongst themselves when, when it was technically, the partnership was owned 50% by Arlene B. Tunin, and the estate of Patrick Glasby, is that the estate of Patrick Glasby transferred their ownership interest in the corporation to Arlene Tunin, who owns 100% of that. And so all of those things had to get corrected. And so we worked from when you approved it on March 2nd, and I went to signing the applications, going through, trying to get verification of all of the correct documents with the attorneys and everybody. It wasn't until about a week ago, Friday, that we finally got things put together to satisfy Scott as the city attorney, and submitted that to the state of Minnesota. And this last Tuesday afternoon, by mid-afternoon, we finally got the state's approval, based on what we'd done, is that technically, as the licensing entity, it's our responsibility to do all of this homework. And so we had to go a little further into detail than what we had done, and have discovered things in our processes that we need to improve and ensure are done correctly, because it's important that the licensing name complies with the business that's filed of record, that that coincides with Department of Revenue, with their buying card, with the insurance for all of that. And so it was important that all of those things were done technically correct. And so what I wanted to point out in providing this to you, is that because it is slightly different, and in Scott's opinion, it was more of a technical correction, that the corporation didn't expand and include any other partners. In fact, it was a reduction in the two that were there, but it was one of the two that was technically listed. And the licensing name is now shown in accordance with the documents filed of record with the state of Minnesota. I wanted to put this back in front of you to get you to approve what I, what I'm showing to you here this evening, just so that there can't be any accusations that we manipulated anything with the licensing provisions, or change of anything in that process. So.
Okay. Any questions?
It was quite an education.
So...
Like, it took quite a bit of time, too.
Okay, I got a...
Mike, what do we have to do now? Just approve?
Approve the technical correction of the liquor license for Sunday and on sale, on sale and Sunday liquor for The Patoon Corporation.
I'll make a motion to approve the tech, approve the review of the technical correction for renewal of on-sale and Sunday intoxicating liquor license for Patoon Corporation, Doing Business as Fishtail Grill.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Dave Brudrick, second by Mark Bartuschek. Any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay. Next, the consent items. Remember, we did add the two, the gambling, gambling one-day license at the KC Hall, and the one-day liquor license at the community center. So if there's any questions or anything with the consent agenda?
I was wondering on the invoices, under unallocated, there's a ballot printing from 2014. They just gave it to us late, I suppose, huh?
That would be coming from Scott County or La Sura County to us.
Yeah, they just do it late. That's where it goes, unallocated?
Um, no, it shouldn't.
Oh, well.
Page three.
No, that should go under the elections budget.
Go somewhere else?
Should go to the elections budget, instead of unallocated.
Mike will make sure Patty changes that. Anything else on the consent agenda?
Oh, no. There's a lot in here.
If there's no other questions on anything, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Pat Scripture. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Okay. Miscellaneous. Jim, got anything?
I do not have anything.
Okay. Pat?
Well, I noticed that, you know, Stacy Witty now resigned from the Gulfport, because she moved out of New Prague. So are we going to get it, get somebody in there, or just do it with the whole group?
Yeah, we've got, in the applications that you're taking right now, you take applications to fill that out.
So now we have four openings?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Pat?
Me?
Anything else?
No.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Nothing.
Okay. Amy?
No.
Mark?
Nope.
Patrick, you were late today. I remember that.
That's because Mark was supposed to pick him up.
Mary, Mary Jo? Mike?
Quick update from Congressman Walz's office. Spoke with Sean Schlesser today in the office. They, like us, had not had success in dealing with the branch chief, Obradovich, out of the GSA office in Chicago. They weren't returning phone calls or emails to the congressman's office. So as of today, the matter's been moved up to now there is a formal congressional inquiry through the Associate Administrator of Office of Congressional and Intergovernmental Affairs. It's now been elevated to a higher level, and now, now there are concerns that when the congressman has to get involved, and that they can't get it resolved below his level with his staff, and we have to elevate it to this level. He now is wanting to talk to the appropriate people and to enter the fray. So it's now been elevated. We still don't have an answer. They said they'll let me know as soon as they make progress through this process, but it's no longer sleeping. It's been, it's risen to another level now. How quickly that's going to make it happen, I don't know.
I'm going to have to go sit on a congressional committee now.
Yeah, about the time you're 70 years old.
Anything else, Mike?
No.
I don't have anything. I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mark Bartuschek. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we're out of here. Now we go and close...